Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, this meeting is called to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzak.
Here.
Councilmember Hartzausen.
I am present.
Councilmember Sumomo.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all for that. Next, we'll move into approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We do not have public communication tonight, so our first public comment period, speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom for attendees participating by phone, dial star nine, raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approaching the podium or raising their hand, we will, this public comment period is closed, and we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C fourteen. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Moving to new business, item number one, consider appointment to the Human Services Commission. Does council wish to take action tonight? Beth?
I move that we appoint Darius Tari to fill position number four on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Your second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Darius Tari to fill position number four on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, throughout the questions, Darius was putting his emphasis on families and youth, and I think that's a really important value for our residents. It's something that they talk about wanting to make sure we have that focus on, and I think, too, just his passion for wanting to get back in the community and learn more about how the community works, and he definitely seems to have an eye for detail and analysis, and I think would be a great addition to help the work that the Human Services does.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Darius came very well prepared and answered our questions very well. He was, had done a lot of research, has been on our website, already knew a lot about the city and what the different commissions do. He's got a lot of great skills and qualifications, such as networking people. He's a people person, building relationships. He's familiar with funding, but as Beth said, very passionate about youth and families, and really, that's what this commission is all about, so we would be lucky to have him.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? And it's been moved and seconded to appoint Darius to fill position number four on the Human Services Commission with a term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Darius. And you can get with Julie. They'll reach out to you and get you set up on when the meetings are and get you all caught up drinking from a firehouse. Thank you. Next is new business, item number two. Authorize South King Housing and Homelessness Partners to distribute funds under RCW eighty-two dot one four dot five three zero. And with us tonight is Claire. You go. There, Claire Goodwin with Skip. And Claire, am I turning this over to Daphne first or to Claire? Going with Claire. Okay, welcome, Claire. Thank you for joining us online.
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. So, good evening. I would typically be there in person. I am battling a bad cough and cold, so I am presenting from home tonight, so thank you for that opportunity. Mayor Wagner, Mayor Protem Smith, and members of the council, let me go ahead and share my screen. Let me do it real quick. Are you, are you seeing a slideshow?
Yes.
Beautiful. All right. Well, thank you all so much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. My name is Claire Goodwin, and I'm the Executive Manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. I am very excited to present to you the Skip Executive Board's recommendations on Skip's two thousand twenty-three Housing Capital Fund. This will be an annual process, so you'll be hearing from me on the Housing Capital Fund every year about this time. So Skip was formed in two thousand nineteen through an interlocal agreement between several city governments in King County to address the housing needs of King County as a unified, coordinated, and collaborative coalition. Covington was a founding member. Skip currently has eleven member jurisdictions, which are listed on the slide, and the city of Sea-Tac recently took action to join Skip, and we will be formalizing their membership later this month, bringing our membership to twelve. Covington is represented by Councilmember Christina Soltes, and more recently, as alternate Councilmember Deborah Hartzak, who serves on the Skip Executive Board. By way of background on Skip's Housing Capital Fund, in two thousand nineteen, substitute House Bill fourteen oh six became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. You may recall that the effective sales tax rate didn't change for the consumer, and instead, the tax gets credited against the state sales tax. In two thousand twenty, House Bill fifteen ninety became law, allowing jurisdictions to impose a one-tenth of one percent local sales and use tax to support affordable housing, behavioral health facilities, and related supported services. Cities had a limited window to act and retain those revenues before the county collected that revenue. Covington is one of the few cities in King County that does collect it, in addition to three other Skip member cities, and we pool those resources for the Housing Capital Fund, which is why you're hearing about it tonight. In two thousand twenty-one, most Skip city councils authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under substitute House Bill fourteen oh six from each participating member jurisdiction for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. In two thousand twenty-three, you may recall that you and the city of Kent authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under House Bill fifteen ninety from both cities for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. In two thousand twenty-two, Skip launched the first funding round of the Housing Capital Fund, and last year, our participating member councils approved two projects for funding. This is the second of an annual process with Skip and member jurisdictions to fund projects with these pooled resources through the Skip Housing Capital Fund, although this is the first year the city of Covington is participating, and we are very thrilled that you are. Use of these pooled funds requires approval from each participating city council. Even though you have already contributed these funds to Skip, your council will need to authorize the allocation of those funds to specific projects. This approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. So Skip opened the second annual funding, the second annual Housing Capital Fund application in two thousand twenty-three. Six projects applied for Skip funding with broad geographic diversity throughout South King County. Last funding round, we received three applications, and all happened to be projects in Burien. Geographic diversity is one of our goals, and we made sure to get the word out for this funding round that this new funding source was available. The Skip Advisory Board reviewed applications and forwarded its funding recommendations to the Skip Executive Board that reflected the policies and priorities adopted by the board. After careful deliberation, the Skip Executive Board concurred with the majority of the Skip Advisory Board's recommendation and recommends funding for projects totaling five million seven hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred and six dollars, with seven hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred and six dollars of the total sourced from substitute fourteen oh six revenue, and four million nine hundred seventy thousand sourced from House Bill fifteen ninety revenue, as described in the Skip Executive Board memo dated January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, which was included in your packet on page two thirty-four. So the Skip Executive Board's recommended projects and funding levels for each project are listed on the slide, and I'll briefly go through each one. First, we have Mercy Housing Northwest Kent Multicultural Village in, you guessed it, Kent. It's a one hundred and ninety-nine unit new construction multifamily rental project located adjacent to the future Kent Des Moines Link Light Rail Station. The project will support households earning between thirty percent area median income, or AMI, to eighty percent AMI, with a twenty percent set aside for households with an intellectual and/or developmental disability, an ADD. The ADD units will benefit from onsite supportive services. A thirty percent set aside will be for families with children. The requested funding from Skip is one million dollars, and the same amount was recommended by the board. The special conditions include being a deferred contingent forgivable loan with no repayment as long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least fifty years. Second is a project from Lehigh located in Skyway, which is unincorporated King County. It's a fifty-five unit new construction multifamily rental project with onsite support services. The project will support households earning between thirty percent to fifty percent AMI, with a seventy-five percent set aside for households transitioning out of homelessness. The project will prioritize tenants with a connection to the neighborhood and includes an early learning center. The requested funding from Skip is two point eight million dollars, and the same amount was recommended by the board. Special conditions are the same as the previous project. Third is a project from TWG called Pandean at Star Lake, located in Kent, adjacent to the Kent-Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. Skip funding would support the South Building, which is a one hundred and sixty-eight new construction multifamily rental project that will support households earning between thirty and sixty percent AMI, with set asides for families and families transitioning out of homelessness or are at risk of homelessness, and households with an ADD. Onsite supportive services will be provided. The requested funding from Skip is two million eight hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, and the board recommended one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars due to the construction timeline being further out than the other projects that they recommended for funding and that we expended all of our available funds. Special conditions for this project include being a deferred one percent interest nonforgivable loan to the low-income housing tax credit partnership, excuse me, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least fifty years. Finally, we have multi-service centers, Victorian Place Two in Des Moines, excuse me. The project in Des Moines is a twenty-unit rehabilitation and preservation project, supporting five households earning up to thirty-five percent AMI, ten households earning up to forty percent AMI, and five households earning up to fifty percent AMI. Requested funding from Skip was originally five hundred thousand dollars, but an updated construction budget was submitted, and contingency funding was recommended by the Executive Board, bringing the recommended total to seven hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred and six dollars. Special conditions include being a secured grant with no repayment so long as affordability and target population are maintained, and the covenant is recorded to ensure affordability for at least fifty years. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from House Bill fifteen ninety contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for each project. You'll see a similar breakdown for the substitute House Bill fourteen oh six funds on the next slide. So the first three projects we discussed are being funded through House Bill fifteen ninety funds pooled by the cities of Covington and Kent. We are seeking authorization from city council to allocate the amount listed for these projects under your city in alignment with the Executive Board's recommendation. This totals four hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for Mercy Housing Kent, Multicultural Village, Lehigh's Skyway Affordable Housing and Early Learning Center, and TWG's Pandean at Star Lake. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from substitute House Bill fourteen oh six contributed by jurisdiction to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for the rehabilitation project in Des Moines. You will also see the unallocated amount by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years and the amount that was carried over from two thousand twenty-two. So in conclusion, we are looking for your support to authorize the allocation of four hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars from the city's contribution to the Skip Housing Capital Fund to finance the affordable housing projects we talked about tonight for our interlocal agreement requirements. I also want to acknowledge the commitment to funding affordable housing that the city of Covington has demonstrated, and without your contributions, these projects would not be possible. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Claire. Does anybody have any questions? Beth?
Hi, Claire. Thank you for the presentation. So the question that I have is that when we look at a project like the Mercy Housing, the total project cost is a hundred and thirty-four million. Skip is paying a million. Is that project fully funded moving forward, or is it going to assume that we will continue to make payment, annual payments from Skip for part of that, or do we want to see things through to completion? And that's probably Megan.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So our contribution is a one-time contribution. The Kent Multicultural Village project has funding commitments from the Department of Commerce from King County. That project is located on surplus land from Sound Transit, and so they have a lot of investment by other public funders and are able to secure the funding that they need to move forward in that. So Skip's funding right now is for capital, and it's going to be one-time, so we currently aren't funding operations and things like that.
Okay. Do we know when that would be ready to open?
Yeah, ready?
I mean, I understand that we wouldn't fund operations, but I, you know, you see projects that, like, continue to go down the road, and they may not have full funding right when they break ground. Yeah, but they have to have money in the pipeline or committed funds. We just don't want to see a project not get done or take ten years to do because it's lacking the resources needed.
Yeah, so, so that information is in the memo, which I don't want to give you bad dates I can look at right now, but I know that construction is anticipated to begin, I want to say mid next year, and I think it will take about a year. And I have it right here, can tell you when occupancy is anticipated for.
June of twenty-seven.
You found it before me. Thank you. Yes, so, so they would begin leasing up. It says February twenty-twenty-seven, and then they would anticipate, you know, taking a full year to have all of those units fully occupied.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Beth. Any other questions? This council wishes to take action this evening. For us is a potential to authorize the allocation of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars from the city of Covington's contribution to the Skip Housing Capital Fund to finance affordable housing in South King County communities in concurrence with the Skip Executive Board's recommendations. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I had the privilege of sitting in for Christina Soltes while she was on her brief maternity leave, so I got to hear a lot about these projects, and it was really exciting. It's great that Covington has the task revenue to support these. And it's good that we're pulling it with other cities so that, you know, altogether we can make a big difference.
Thank you, Debbie. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I appreciate, and I think our residents appreciate, the regionality approach and trying to make sure that we don't have projects going specifically to one city, or, you know, being able to spread, spread the resources around, and so having some that are in Kent close to home that could potentially help our residents, some of our residents. That's something we look for on the JRC for as well, when we're looking at projects and how to allocate money, so thank you for that thoughtfulness.
Thanks, Beth. Christina?
Yes. Thank you, Claire, for that wonderful presentation. A few months ago, we did allocate money. I just want to clarify, we did allocate the funds to go to Skip, and it's wonderful to see that they are moving forward, and it sounds like we're going to be getting these presentations once or twice a year, every time there's a bidding process, and so it's, so I personally appreciate seeing exactly where it's going and getting that presented to us. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for against the motion? Been moved and seconded to authorize the allocation of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars from the city of Covington's contribution to the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Housing Capital Fund to finance affordable housing in South King County communities in concurrence with the Skip Executive Board's recommendation. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claire, thank you very much for even showing up to do the presentation. I appreciate you being here, even though it's online. You're still here in spirit, so thank you, and we look forward to continuing to see what Skip can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Have a great evening. With that, we, that concludes new business, and we'll move into future agenda items. Our next council meeting is set for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. Does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda item? All right. With that, we will move into council staff comments, and we'll start with Chief.
Good evening. I don't have any comments. Enjoy your Valentine's Day tomorrow.
Thank you, Chief. Ethan?
Yeah, hi, Council. Just a brief report, I wanted to let council know that the two rotating art pieces of artwork at the Covington Community Park were installed today. We already have started getting positive reviews from the folks that were out at the park, so it's exciting to get those in, and we'll be coordinating an event of some sort, some sort of onsite presentation of the artworks, inviting the artists, the Art Commission, and the City Council to that, and that'll be happening soon, so more to come on that. That's it.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
I'm struggling here in Zoomland. Good evening, Council. I have nothing for you tonight.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Nothing other than thank you for the thoughtful discussion on the study session. I appreciate it, and I'll bring back those additional proposals for you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, and I have no further report. Thank you.
There is an executive session.
Oh, there is. There's an executive session.
I was going to say, wait a minute.
Someone didn't get their Valentine.
To review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one subsection G.
That's the one. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You were just testing us. Thank you, Mark.
I was about to say, yeah, well.
I appreciate all of you having my back there. Apologies. Thank you.
I was about to applaud for you for saying not to get a session, but.
Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items I wanted to bring up with council tonight. First is, we emailed out about some potential agenda items for our joint meeting with the Kent School Board. I received two of those, wanted to share those with council tonight. First is sidewalks as a joint partnership between the district and the city. Sidewalks, obviously, around the schools. So that's a potential item that we could bring up to the school district to share. Just as an aside, we do work quite a bit with grants and whatnot on our own. Doesn't necessarily need school district support for those. When we get those, we put in those sidewalks, but it is a good discussion, especially if the school district were willing to contribute to those projects, that money that we receive through grants could go a lot further. So that's a potential item. The next one is middle school sports, to bring back baseball and softball. Do you want to speak to that one, Joe? And see if that's some council.
I think, I think sports in general are a good thing for our youth, and I think, to quote, my gosh, I always screw up his name, played for the L.A. Galaxy, made millions of dollars playing soccer, and he, no, it was, went to play. I could see his face, long hair, mustache, goatee, not that gum.
John Doe.
No, yeah, we'll go with that. I'll find his name here when I, by the time, and he even said to, when my kids were growing up in Europe, it did not cost, it cost me a lot less to send them to go play club soccer, whereas here in America, it's costing me three thousand dollars a month for my two kids to play soccer each. Here, baseball, softball, when you play travel teams, it costs, and it can cost anywhere from a thousand to ten thousand dollars a year to play travel sports, whereas if you can play on your school team, it costs you the price of a new bat and new glove and cleats.
So is that an item the council would like, those two items to, we propose?
Sure.
So we'll submit those both to the school board. Next one is, during our summit that we held a few weeks ago, we discussed ballot measure, and in our notes and on the recording, what Jim said to us, it was that we would go out for the August, the primary election, and that's the ballot that we put it on. However, I think there's been maybe a little misunderstanding with some, and I just wanted to clarify what council's desires were for that, that it be the August primary and not the November general election.
I remember us discussing going out in August, and that's why we're starting this month in discussing that ballot measure out in public. Um, out in public meetings so that it can go out in August ballot.
Any other, are we just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because we're rolling forward on this and um, didn't want council to be thinking one thing and us another, so.
Yeah, because I'm ready to start talking on February twentieth about it.
Perfect. That's all I have. Thank you.
I do have one item that if council would like for the um, joint set. Um, rapid flash, the flashing light that we put up at Cedar Valley and at the Fox Roundabout. If that's a potential item, if council would like that for the schools in Covington. Um, that is a joint item in concurrence with the sidewalks.
Yep.
Is council fine with that?
So putting beacons at other crosswalk?
Like Covington Elementary, Madsen.
Did we? Say that we weren't necessarily certain they were working in front of Cedar Valley?
They were working today.
I mean, working and blinking, I mean, working to do the job.
Yeah, that they're stopping people.
Oh, are they stopping?
Oh, like are people not stopping?
Yeah, no, they're still not stopping.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I'm just not sure. Are we certain they're effective?
Is this a conversation for the Kent School?
I know they blink. Effective, that's the word.
Good. So question on that, what is that? Is that a moving violation? They go through that blinking light?
It's gonna depend on whether the person was in the crosswalk legally, all that kind of stuff. Yes, it can be a moving violation.
So it sounds like we need to do some enforcement, maybe some more education on those.
Yeah, the Cedar Valley area is very high on our list. We, we do spend a fair amount of time down there and I know when our traffic officer is there, we have. Near full compliance because they definitely, they'll get tickets.
I like where he parks. You can't see him when you're coming down.
He does know what he's doing, so he's very good at it.
Beth?
So I know, um, we chatted about this before, but. One thing that I would like to talk about is. Their choice of not collecting impact fees for several years. Um, and. And then wanting to go to the voters for capital levy. And I don't know if. Like sidewalks and improvements or infrastructure. Could be you, could be funded with impact fees. It seems like there's always going to be construction or improvements that need to be done at a level particularly when. We have houses that are going to be going in some point. And I. I know they have a formula, but I'm curious to find out exactly where they draw the line on that and.
Council, okay. Okay, so we'll submit those four items then.
I have a question on that impact fee that Beth brought up. So if they choose an impact fee. Does that same impact fee have to be used in each of the cities or didn't they change the impact fee per city?
It's a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think it's been uniform, but whether that's by law or not, I don't know. We'd have to.
Regan, do you want me to jump in on that? This is Selena. Um, it's a good question. They can do it based on the individual city. So they can break it down and they generally have. Um, broken it down based on the, the allocations of students from the various cities within that district. So you kind of pay your proportionate share of that complete impact. Um, on the school district. So yes, they can be different for each school, for each city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Krista?
I have nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Joe?
Uh, so the, the soccer player who said it uh, was Sultan Ibrahimic or, yeah, I still said it wrong and I have a pronunciation guide in front of me. Uh, but that, yeah, sports in America is expensive. So that's why I would like us to talk to the district about it. Um, and that first pick meeting of the year is tomorrow. I had the, nothing too exciting on the list except that we will be discussing the uh. The process or the skip rules and how everything works in there because the last time we, we went over their, that skip pick. Pick rules and everything because the last time we discussed that was twenty twelve. We haven't made any changes to that. So we will be discussing that and probably putting together a subcommittee that I will not be volunteering for. Uh, but you know, uh, if anyone else wants to, I can, sure, sure you can take my spot for that particular committee. Uh, I have R T C, our first meeting of the year next week where. As of this moment, from everything I'm hearing, I'm going to be the chair of the S C A caucus for R T C. Which means I'll be the vice chair of the R T C committee. Uh, so if county council member Moscata can't be there, yay, I'm in charge of those meetings. Maybe get bus, more buses put into Covington if she's not there for a day. Um. I started student teaching yesterday. So far I know of like the hundred kids that I will be teaching, I know. Four of their names, so I'm on pace to at least get ten of them by the end of the week. Um. Other than that, I've got nothing else.
Thanks, Joe. Christina?
I like this. All right, keep us on our toes. Um, I cannot wait for Joe to see his favorite crow. At the park. I'd like your feedback, but I'm, it's, it's nice to hear that those went up and I'm looking forward to the mayor's meetup um, next Tuesday. I'm hoping we can get a good turnout. It's. It's at Timberlake, right?
Timberlake Clubhouse.
Timberlake, sorry. Wow. Um, yeah, look, really, I hope, hope we get a good turnout and um. Get some good information out there and. In, in, information for what's coming up in August as well. So, um, looking forward to seeing you guys soon. That's everything.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer?
Um, I was really excited to see the rotating art pictures. I immediately. Sent them to past arts commissioners from way back. Um, who live, you know, like in Colorado and, you know, crazy things. They've retired and moved away and uh. They were very excited. I got immediate responses. Um, really excited to see that kind of um. Roots of their labor from many, many, many uh, years ago is finally become a reality. So thanks for um, facilitating that.
Thanks, Jennifer. Beth?
Head planet, uh, City Action Days. It was um, felt like. Kind of on steroids because everything was so quick and, and we had to break away through some of the activities to, to meet with. Senator Kaufman. Um, but it was great to connect with her. We didn't get a chance to talk to our representatives because they were still in sessions, so. Um, and you know, being able to connect with other municipal members and staff from other cities. Um, it's great to share stories and see what people are doing and how they handle pro, um, their um, concerns or how they handle projects. Um, had a chance to go to the Coho Creek H O A board meeting uh, with Debbie um, virtually a few weeks ago and they're having their general meeting. Um, I think.
Thursday.
Next Thursday. And it's great because I, that's a community I don't think I'd ever driven through before for all the driving around I do and like to see what's going on. So it was nice to see a different. Um, neighborhood, connect with a different set of um, residents. And they asked some very thoughtful questions and I appreciate the responses from the city. Now Debbie did a great job puing them up to help with their speeding and getting the speed trailer and so forth out there. Um. I think we have a J R C meeting at the end of the month. It's the consortium wide meeting, so we'll get to know everybody and see. What projects might be coming down the pipeline to, to look out for twenty twenty-four. All the things. Busy.
Thanks, Beth.
Yeah.
Debbie?
Thank you. Well, Beth was right. We had a, a great meeting with the uh. Coho Creek H O A Board and then next week I, I thought I had signed up. I, it got. Anyway, I will be there next week and I, so um, I think we made a lot of headway with that group. Um, and thanks to Regan and staff for, boy, I've never seen such a quick response and things just got like boom, boom, boom. Um, you know, unlike Foxwood where we couldn't really. Uh, fix the problem that they um, brought forward to us, but. Um, I also learned a lot in that whole episode of, you know, I didn't know where Coho Creek was, so drove it, got out, took pictures of the, the broken fence in the creek and. Um, so uh, I'm glad that we were able to respond so quickly. So thank you and thank you. Adam, for your team um, getting the speeding trailer set up. Um, unfortunately I had to miss A W C last week due to my family emergency. Um. I've got uh, skateboard next Tuesday, so really nothing to report on that. And Regan, I want to thank you for the, the valent, the thoughtful.
Right.
Were these like to butter us up? Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Debbie. Sean?
Couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Pute Sound Regional Fire Authority and it's um. A meeting last Wednesday. Um, this was basically the first meeting with. Uh, the new board members, so five new members. Uh, the board is actually, I think, like twelve or thirteen now. It's really, it's, it's huge. Um, we, on the agenda. Well, a couple of things, I, I always have time to, uh, there's a standing agenda item to provide updates from the city for the R F A. Uh, and I talked about our summit and some of the things we had discussed there. Most notably the traffic calming measures and uh, uh, potential rules for the battery energy storage. Um, just wanted them to be aware that we're working on uh, those types of things. Um, and then the lion's share of the meeting was spent on the fire benefit charge. So. Every year, the R F A sends out postcards to talk about how much uh, you'll pay for. Uh, fire services that year and, and the public is provided an opportunity to challenge those. And so we held our first meeting, which was. Um, four people have challenged their benefit charges and then we'll hold a hearing at the next meeting to either say yea or nay to those changes. So. Um, and then, yeah, I'll be at the Coho H O A uh, next Thursday. Um. And probably will touch base with you about some of the issues they brought up so that it may circle back on those. Uh, and then I really do appreciate uh, Regan, the updates on the code violations. I'm glad to see those are getting moved through the system. It's. Yeah, uh, obviously I don't have the data in front of you, but I'm glad to see they're moving more quickly. So that's great. That's what I heard. Yeah, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Like, do we have the mayor's meetup next uh, Tuesday at Timberlake Clubhouse? Joe and Christine will be joining me. The next mayor's meetup is scheduled for March nineteenth at eight A M at Nicky's. So um. Any council members that would like to join me? And then the one after that will be April sixteenth here in the community room at City Hall. And I'll reach out to you, to each of you to see who would like to join me for that one. Uh, that is all I have. So we'll move into the second comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. And are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone. Dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute participating virtually. Or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Or anybody online? Nobody's online. With that, public comment period is closed. We will move into executive session for approximately fifteen minutes, coming back at eight P M. With that, after the executive session, no further business will be taken. Thank you. Stop the recording, please. Good evening. We have concluded our executive session at fifteen minutes at eight o'clock. This meet with no further business being taken. This meeting is adjourned at eight P M. Thank you all very much.